All right, I'd like to call to order the October meeting of the Board of Education. Would you all please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the business of the liberty of each other.
Thank you, and, okay.
Steven Arthur.
Present.
Jim Batson. Alex Delipoli.
Here.
Pat Gruddy. Karen Lindstedt.
Here.
Owen Mauer.
Here.
Bill Rattner.
Here.
Please note that Jim Batson and Pat Gruddy are absent tonight. And taking place of our President, Pat Gruddy, I will be filling in for him. And tonight, I'd like to review the agenda. We'll be covering communication items, our consent vote agenda, a report from the Program and Personnel Committee, a report from the Facilities and Finance Committee, a report from the Property Committee, if there is one, from the Special Education District of Lake County, from the Illinois Association of School Boards, and then adjournment. Let's see, we're going to begin tonight with a report, an educational presentation.
Right. This evening, we have two educational presentations to share with you. The first will be presented by Mrs. Monica Tolba. She's our librarian at Vernon Hills High School. And during the summer, our teachers participate in a lot of curriculum development projects, as well as some professional development growth opportunities. And she's going to share with us a summer online book group that met this summer and what they did.
We did. Thank you. Thank you, Deb. So I'm Monica Tolba, and I appreciate you inviting me to come tonight. We had so much fun reading together. We had, myself and 12 teachers and department administrators, even one educational support personnel participated in the book club. We chose books that are nominated for a statewide reading award. The Abraham Lincoln Illinois High School Book Award has 22 books nominated, and students from all across the state vote for their favorite books. So these are the hot new, everyone's talking about them books. And so we picked our books based on those. There are plenty of adult books that we could have read, but the whole point really was to expose the teachers to new young adult literature and to give them some new ideas to use in their classrooms. And it was very successful. One of our participants, Tara Nieves, she's the English Department Supervisor here. She was teaching summer school at the same time as our book club, and she took one of the books that we read together and had her class read it. And even though sometimes adults can be a little tough on young adult literature, I have to tell you that her students loved the book. So one of the, some of the activities we did, the online portion was, we used an online bulletin board to share our thoughts. We also met in person three times and discussed the books. Everyone made video, videos about their books. In the same way that movies have movie trailers to try to drum up interest in people going to the movies, well, there's such thing as a book trailer. And a book trailer is a short video that tries to grab a reader's interest. And I tell you, I shamelessly borrowed all of their projects when I am promoting books and trying to get our students to read new books. So I think that was the side benefit for me, was that I had all this extra material for my lessons. And I'd like to share with you some of the videos that the teachers created. We read three books, and the first book was, no one chose to do a video on it. That's the one that we kind of didn't like, but Tara's students loved. The second two books were the most popular for our adult readers. So the first video is, was created by Ashley Simpson, and she used iMovie to create a book trailer promoting the book, Love is the Higher Law by David Levitin. And this book is, is a chance to try to get teenagers, who were so little at the time of 9/11 that they could hardly remember it, to experience what it was like. So this is, has a 9/11 theme to it. So here's Ashley's book trailer.
It appears that the, there is more and more fire and smoke enveloping the very top of the building. And as fire crews are descending on this area, it does not appear that there's any kind of an effort up there yet. Now remember, oh my God!
It looks like a second plane has just hit-
I didn't see a plane go in. That, that looks exploded.
I just saw another plane coming in from the side.
You did? I was out of-
So that's what a book trailer does. It just gives the, the feeling of the book, but it's not going to give anything away. The second book trailer I'd like to tell, I'd like to show you is about a book called Ghosts of War. And it's written by Ryan Smithson. Currently, I think he's about 21. And he was 19 years old when he wrote this book. It's a, an account of his first tour of duty in Iraq. And it's, I think, a really good example of what, what an older teenager can do with a memoir. So Amy Christian, she's an English teacher here, she made this book trailer. And the photos that she used are, you have to know, are not just random photos that she got from Clipart or, you know, something she found online. These are photos that were taken by a friend of hers, Eric. He spent two tours of duty, one in Iraq, one in Afghanistan. So she used their family friends' photos to show, to potential readers what the book Ghosts of War is like. So same book, different teacher. Sean Healy, he was really going for the teenage boy non-reader group when he made this trailer. I just told Bo that the, that the volume is really loud on this Ozzy Osbourne song, so just beware. Now, we did meet three times in person. If one of the participants couldn't make it, though, they made up that time by reading an additional book. So Carolyn Hazel read a book that none of, none of the rest of the group did, and she chose to make her book trailer on this book. It's the book called The Story of a Girl. And it is, it's, it's the story of a teenage girl who, who has kind of a life-changing moment, and she feels like she wants to, to change who she becomes after that moment. This is, this is the contrast to the Ozzy Osbourne song. Carolyn's voice is very calming and very beautiful, and you just have to try to go along with the story of a girl.
We all want a place where we belong. A place where we can be heard and understood. How far would you go to belong to someone? And what would you do if you went too far? And everyone found out? How long would you wait? How long could you wait to be forgiven?
If anyone wants to read those books, I have lots of copies of them. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. I'd just like to share with you, it's just an example of some really creative projects the teachers do during the summer. And this was one where they incorporated technology and reading and talked about literacy strategies and are going to use them in their classrooms. So it was, it was really exciting, and they were very excited about that project, so. Our second presentation tonight, actually, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Thelma Krupp and Mrs. Cheryl Stephens, our International Language Department Chairs. And they're going to tell you about a new partnership that has begun to establish an international travel endowment for our students. So Cheryl and Thelma.
Good evening. It is our great pleasure to recognize this evening Dr. Derek Bonowitz and Mrs. Adriana Bonowitz, Truman Anderson, and Caroline Hume, and the Stewart Family Foundation for their financial support in helping Libertyville and Vernon Hills High School students experience summer language immersion programs, travel, and everyday life abroad in foreign countries through a nonprofit organization called the Experiment in International Living World Learning. We are very grateful for their outstanding community support and their partnerships developed with our LHS and VHHS students over the past 10 years. Doctor and Mrs. Bonowitz were experimenters in their youth and came in 2001 to invite LHS and VHHS to participate in sending students abroad. We have worked with them annually for the last 10 years. Our students have participated in summer travel to France, Germany, the Czech Republic, Spain, Italy, Thailand, Japan, Ecuador, Costa Rica, Brazil, Argentina, New Zealand, Australia, and the Navajo Nation, to name a few of the destinations. They have graciously given their time to be guest speakers for many of our students during International Languages Week celebrations, on the importance of language study, immersion programs, and the role of translation in the world of business. They have hosted our LHS and VHHS experimenters and their families in their home to help them prepare for their summers abroad. And Truman Anderson and Caroline Hume, father and mother of two of my own personal German students, and also of Mr. Kurt's German students, Mr. Anderson has been a guest speaker for various topics in the German curriculum over the past eight years and through the education of his son and daughter. And Truman has been looking for ways to extend his support of our German program and will utilize the resources from the Stewart Family Foundation to cover the costs of the Germany and Czech Republic immersion program for students learning German beginning as early as June of 2012. Truman was aware of the Experiment in International Living and chose this organization because of its commitment to helping high school students develop meaningful cross-cultural experiences through travel and homestay opportunities, which have significant community resource and service components as a part of their overall outbound ambassador program. We would like at this time to have our guests share a few brief words with our Board of Education and our community guests this evening, as we recognize them for their extensive support of transformational educational opportunities for young people here in District 128. So we'll start with Dr. Bonowitz.
Thelma, thank you very much, and good evening. My wife Adrienne and I are honored to be here with you tonight, and thank you for your recognition of this program. It's been a delightful experience for us, and it continues. We will continue to support the international, or the Experiment International Living as much as we can, but we're delighted that it's happening here in our own community. And I'm particularly grateful for the support and the hard work that Thelma Krupp and Cheryl Stephens have undertaken all these 10 years to make the program such a success. I really wish we had some of the Experiment students here to tell you their stories, because that's where you come to learn what this is all about. But thank you very much for your recognition and for your support of this program. We're most appreciative.
And now Truman Anderson will say a few words about the new phase of the Experiment.
Well, the first thing I would like to say is thank you very much for this very kind recognition, which was most unexpected when we decided to become involved with this program. My wife and I met in high school German class. So we like to tell kids that all kinds of interesting things can happen in the study of foreign languages. But looking back on my own high school education, in addition to my marriage, I got an awful lot out of studying German in high school, and had the opportunity to travel to Germany and Austria as a high school student. And it was really the experience of a lifetime. It had a deep impact. And it's a great pleasure to be able to make a contribution to help children here in the Libertyville schools do the same. I want to make absolutely clear that this gift is made possible by my employer, the Stewart Family Foundation. I'm the Executive Director of the Foundation, and one of the privileges that I enjoy in that post is the ability to direct a certain amount of money every year from the Foundation's assets to a charity of my choosing. And this is the one that we've chosen, on the basis of our very strong confidence in the program at Libertyville High School. Thelma and Alex do just a terrific job. And again, it's just a great pleasure to be in a position to make this kind of a contribution. So thank you so much for all that you've done, and thank you for your recognition.
Our guests tonight. At this time, I'd like to read a certificate that we'll be presenting to you. Dr. Prentice Lee and Karen Lindstedt, our Board Representative. This certificate of appreciation is awarded to each of you in recognition of the valuable contribution of time, talent, and resources to support the international language programs within our district. You have provided students with opportunities to develop an awareness and an appreciation of the diverse cultures in our learning community and our world. And thank you once again.
All right, thank you so much for that. And as we move on to the President's Report, tonight, we are presenting a revised 2011-12 committee and board meeting schedule. We're making some changes, particularly it involves our committee meetings. The change will be that the Facilities and Finance Committee meetings now will be meeting beginning at 6 o'clock PM instead of 6:15, and-
And I would just say for the record, because Dr. Mauer is so efficient with the P&amp;P Committee, that we are able to move that up and get F&amp;F started a little bit earlier. So we certainly think that's a, that's good news for everyone on the board.
Okay, and I'd like to ask for a motion to approve this as presented.
So move.
A second?
Second.
And we'll call? Arthur?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Delipoli?
Aye.
Lindstedt?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Rattner?
Aye.
Great, thank you. And next, we have our reports from our Student Board Representatives. Let's start, Durinka, do you have, I'd like to present your report, thank you.
I do. So Homecoming Week was last week, and our spirit days, because we had a little bit of a shortened week, we had four. So Neon Day, Decadent Day, Jersey Day, and Wildcat Spirit Day. And the Homecoming Queen was Kalen Constable. At the Homecoming game, there was a touching tribute to Coach Kuziasky, and he had, I think it was 18 of his former captains, which was really sweet. And I know a lot of people enjoyed it. We did win our Homecoming game, which put us into the playoffs, which was really exciting. And football playoffs start on Saturday. Last Friday at school, very early in the morning, NBC5 was at our school for the pep assembly or the pep game of the week. And it was, you know, I walked in there a little bit late, and I was shocked to see how many people had actually woken up and gone. So it was really, really fun. The French students arrived on October 13th, and they leave on this Friday, and they've been touring Chicago. And they, they came to school with us on one day, and they think our schools are just like how they presented in the movies. So, they say it's like High School Musical, that's what I've heard. The Senior Code Drive at Libertyville started on October 17th and goes through November 4th. The soccer team won regionals, and they start their sectional playoff tomorrow. And girls volleyball and boys football are in the playoffs, and they start this week.
Great, thank you very much. And Shylee, would you like to give us Vernon Hills' report, please?
Sure. Currently, the musical is in production, and that's why Kate's not here today, but she's busy in rehearsal, and they're planning on opening the show this Saturday. The boys golf team had a very successful run at State as a freshman qualifying as a team, and placing 10th, so that was very good. We currently had our write assembly last Wednesday for the freshmen, and it was very successful, especially for the seniors who had not had the open mic experience before. So they were getting just as emotional with the freshmen, so it was a really great bonding experience, especially between the classes. Other than that-
Shylee, can you just take a minute and talk about the assembly for the community? Because they may not know. It's such a neat experience, I think, for students and part of the Vernon Hills culture. So you want to talk about that for a little bit?
Sure. We take a day for the freshmen to learn to get to know each other, and write is respect, integrity, trust, and experience. And we break them off into small groups of about 15, and they get to speak with each other about different experiences they've had with trust and responsibility and respect. And it helps with anti-bullying and brings the classes together. And they get a chance to meet new people, and a couple of our seniors share stories. We also have an assembly with a guest speaker.
And Dr. Swir, how many years have we been doing this now?
I think it started with your freshman class, but we hadn't done the open mic, open mic before, so I think this is our fourth year.
Yeah, and it's, it's just a very powerful experience, if you ever have the opportunity to see that, and very, very much part of the Vernon Hills culture, and very timely, ahead of when there's been a lot more national discussion about bullying and treating people with respect, those types of things. So really, really cutting edge. So thank you for sharing that. And then I just wanted to make one comment, that I stopped by the assembly on Friday morning, and it is surreal that you walk into the gym at 5:30, a quarter to 6:00, and there are 1,400, or 1,500 Libertyville students, and there are 300 or 400 students from Lake Forest who had to be at school at 4:30 in the morning on Friday to ride buses over. And it was just such a neat thing. And Athletic Director Brian Kelly and Student Activities Director Jen Paul just did a fabulous job, along with our, you know, custodian and maintenance staff over at Libertyville to make all of that happen. It was just a really enjoyable way to start a Friday morning. And I'm not going to recommend that we start school at 5:30, however, Jen. I just want you to know that, okay? So it wasn't that good, once, once in a while, so. It was pretty super.
Well, I'd also like to add that the girls swimming and diving team were very excited at the pool, open background, you could hear the cheering down the hallway, so.
Great, thanks, guys. Next, we move on to our Superintendent's Report.
Okay, as always, we have some good news to share this evening, as the year continues along. Leading the good news tonight is the fact that there were no life-threatening injuries in the recent minibus accident involving LHS freshman girls volleyball players, their coach, and the driver of the other vehicle involved in the accident. We're truly thankful for that. D128 and LHS administrators and the LHS learning support teams are committed to supporting the girls, their parents, and the coach through full recovery, thanks to the LHS administrative team for their communication and follow-through during and after the accident. District 128 has been named the School Search 2011 Bright A-plus Award winner for Academic Excellence in Education. District 128 is one of only 59 Illinois school districts out of 868 to be honored with this award. The award is given to districts that are among the top 5% of Illinois school districts academically and also serving a wide variety of students. VHHS Student Assistance Program Coordinator Margaret Pither has been recognized with an Award of Recognition in the 2011-12 Illinois State Board of Education Those Who Excel Awards. So, Mary, congratulations, and keep up the good work. The following Vernon Hills High School students were named October Cougar Class Act Award winners. Maggie Didier, Stephen Didier, Sarah Doherty, Bobby Kinnear, Natalie Martinez, Ethan McGrew, Nicholas Newman, Luz Passias, Adolfo Rojas, and Melissa Rosas. The following students were named Libertyville High School September Students of the Month. Taylor Salata, Pat Leeters, Kalen Constable, Andy Grant, Michaela Ward, Ellie Braneman, Stephen Potts, Samantha Bone, Amanda Yang, Nikki Crum, Olive Camplin, Kirsten Kretschmer, and Jake Keef. The LHS Student Council is a recipient of a $1,500 check from Life Source Blood Services in recognition of donations made during the 2010-11 school year. The following VHHS students were selected to perform in the IMEA District 7 Festival held on November 12th at New Truer High School in Weneka. In orchestra, Lisa Chertok, Annie Ho, Hey Su Lee, Daniel Montgomery, Ken Sup Shin, Justin Song, and Joe Jadi. In band, Maddie Barch, Ivan Rafucci, Jacob Visick, Alice Jiang, and Stephen Jiang. Band selected to orchestra wins. Munna, I'll try this again. Munna Bin Haishdhar, Meredith Bennett Swanson, Tori Calderon, Suzie Chen, Melanie Chuwa, and Paige Kibler. In chorus, Lindy Dantez, Drew Echols, Philip Hansen, Ian Hoffman, Kate Lee, Joey Marsick, Hayden Moffett, Christian Powell Merrill, Joy Rowe, Annie Ramses, Allison Tran, and David Cepeda. The following Libertyville High School students were selected to perform in the IMEA District 7 Festival held on November 12th at New Truer High School as well. In orchestra, Lucia Jean, Kirsten Opendal, Brian Schubert, and Ingrid Reed. In band, Angie Roser, Taylor Isberg, Natalie LaPlante, Ben Jones, Luke San, Aaron Gray, Clayton Cullender, Laura Andrew, Zach Alvin, Ryan Stuckerman, Emily Gilbertson, and Diana Groth. In choir, Audrey Johnson, Camille Meccaletti, John Hutchins, Bradford, Rizelle, Eric Villanueva, and Matt Tassler. And in jazz band, Ryan Stuckerman, Ben Jones, Christian Vitor, and Zach Alvin. So, congratulations to all those students, and again, a great fine arts representation for both our high schools. Okay, swimming pool compliance. Exciting news on Friday. Just wanted to update the board and the community again. As you are aware, District 128 has received, reviewed, and signed stipulated settlement agreements from the Illinois Department of Public Health for the Libertyville and Vernon Hills High School swimming pools. As such, the LHS and VHHS pools open for use again after school on Friday, October 21st. Pool users received information through their athletic directors, coaches, and/or organization Friday regarding practice and competition schedules. We are just ecstatic that our students and communities have complete use of our pools again. The stipulated agreements allowed District 128 to use the LHS and VHHS pools while working with IDPH to gain compliance plan approval to conduct required repairs and pass necessary inspections prior to June 1st, 2012. The D-128 Board of Education and I are committed to working with IDPH to bring LHS and VHHS pools into compliance prior to the June 1st, 2012 deadline. We want to extend a special thanks to our colleagues and neighbors at Mundeline and Stevenson High Schools for making their very busy swimming pools available to our students while our pools were closed. We greatly appreciated their efforts to accommodate the LHS and VHHS swimming programs during our time of need, and we will gladly return the favor in the future if necessary. In addition, I want to extend sincere thanks to our District 128 Board of Education and staff, and most importantly, to our parents, students, and communities for their assistance, patience, and support throughout this very challenging process. I am so appreciative of your collective efforts in working with us toward both a temporary resolution and permanent solution to the swimming pool compliance problem. You are truly amazing. So, as the signatory for the district on the stipulated agreements, I signed the agreements on behalf of the district and returned them, and all other necessary documentation has been sent to the IDPH at this time. But just for the record, I would ask for board approval of the stipulated agreements and supporting documents and payment that needed to accompany those documents. So, at this time, I recommend that the board approve and endorse the stipulated settlement agreements for the LHS and VHHS swimming pools.
And I'd like to ask for a motion to agree to support what Prentice has just outlined.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Batsen?
Aye.
Eli Polly?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Eli Polly?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Markser?
Aye.
Batsen?
Aye.
Great. Thank you very much. And Deb, just a very brief update on student achievement data.
Yes. At our P&amp;P meeting this month, I shared with you our student achievement data at a glance sheet. And at this time, I'd just like to direct our community to where they can find out a lot of information about our district. And Bo has brought up our district website at this time, and there is a link in the left menu that says About D-128. And if you click on that and scroll down a bit, you can find the 2011 Fall Student Achievement Data at a glance. And this is just a compilation of how the class of 2011 did last year and how we did on the PSAE last year, all of the test scores, AP, ACT, SAT, kind of in a one-stop place. We're very proud, once again, of how our students have done. And each year, I'm amazed that we, you know, in some areas, we have significant increases. One I would just like to point out again is that our district average ACT composite score is 25.0. But as I look at the trends, if you scroll down just a little bit more, Bo, to our PSAE data, those were the juniors who took that test last year. I'm going to predict that the class of 2012 will do great things, too, just by looking at how they did on that PSAE. So, once again, we're very proud of how our students are doing academically, and this is a place where you can find all that information, as well as our fall school report cards. Once those get done, they'll be posted on the same page.
Great, Deb. Thank you. And finally, under other this evening, I do want to report to the board that the last time we met, we had mentioned that Dr. Marina Scott and Dr. Al Fleming were traveling to Cuba to teach organizational management through Loyola University, and we're pleased to report that they've had an amazing experience. They are on their way back home, and will be back in the district on Wednesday. It takes two days of travel time to make that loop back from Cuba, and so, we're going to be excited to see them back in the district, and we're going to ask them at some point to do what Ellen has done for us in the past, and do an overview and show a few pictures and talk about their experience there. What a great honor for them. So, we will all wish for safe travel for them to return to us on Wednesday. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. All right. Now is the time for invitation for public comment. Is there anyone here who would like to make a comment? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the consent vote agenda. Looking for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Eli Polly?
Aye.
All right. And now, the Program and Personnel Committee, Chairperson Mauer.
Okay. We have two items on the agenda. The first one is the 2012-13 Curriculum Proposals. So, we're looking to motion to approve those. Those are listed in the packet. The vast majority of the changes are due to the transcript coding project that the state of Illinois is undertaking, and we have changed the names of our courses or some of those names to be in line with what the state offers, so that when transcripts go to different universities, everyone's reading the same thing. We had some drops in classes that were, we were not getting enough enrollment for, and we're adding a Chinese to honors class and a Principles of Engineering class and Project Lead the Way. The overall cost increase for all of those changes would just be .2. So, .2 comes out to be about, what, like $8,000?
And really, if you recall, as we've discussed before, in the Chinese program, we've allocated 1.0 FTE. So, we'll just really be absorbing, you know, FTE that we already have in Chinese.
Yeah. So, overall, I mean, you know, there were days that, there were years that we were doing much more, but we have really slowed down with this. But I think for .2, all of that is a bargain. So, I'm looking for a motion to approve those changes as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. And roll call, please.
Mauer?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batsen?
Aye.
Eli Polly?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Markser?
Aye.
Batsen?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Eli Polly?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batsen?
Aye.
Eli Polly?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batsen?
Aye.
Eli Polly?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batsen?
Aye.
Eli Polly?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Eli Polly?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Eli Polly?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Eli Polly?
Aye.
All right. And now, the Program and Personnel Committee, Chairperson Mauer.
Okay. We have two items on the agenda. The first one is the 2012-13 Curriculum Proposals. So, we're looking to motion to approve those. Those are listed in the packet. The vast majority of the changes are due to the Transcript Coding Project that the state of Illinois is undertaking, and we have changed the names of our courses or some of those names to be in line with what the state offers, so that when transcripts go to different universities, everyone's reading the same thing. We had some drops in classes that were, we were not getting enough enrollment for, and we're adding a Chinese to honors class and a Principles of Engineering class and Project Lead the Way. The overall cost increase for all of those changes would just be .2. So, .2 comes out to be about, what, like $8,000?
And really, if you recall, as we've discussed before, in the Chinese program, we've allocated 1.0 FTE. So, we'll just really be absorbing, you know, FTE that we already have in Chinese.
Yeah. So, overall, I mean, you know, there were days that, there were years that we were doing much more, but we have really slowed down with this. But I think for .2, all of that is a bargain. So, I'm looking for a motion to approve those changes as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. And roll call, please.
Mauer?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batsen?
Aye.
Eli Polly?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batsen?
Aye.
Eli Polly?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batsen?
Aye.
Eli Polly?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
This concludes the Program Personnel Committee report.
Great. Thank you. And now, to our Facilities and Finance Committee, Chairperson Arthur.
We have several items this evening. The first one up is the lifeguard trainer fees. We're looking for a motion to approve the lifeguard trainer fee adjustment from $50 to $85, which is really driven by an increase from the Red Cross.
I make a motion that we approve that increase to $85.
Second.
Roll call?
Arthur?
Any discussion?
Oh, sorry. Any discussion?
Oh, you're up.
Roll call.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batsen?
Aye.
Eli Polly?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
All set?
Thank you. Second item up is a recommendation to approve the resolution establishing fund balance policies as required by, let me get this name correct, the, who are they?
The GASB.
The G-A-S-B. Is this a Rule 54 or?
It is a pronouncement from them.
Pronouncement number 54, apparently.
Yes.
Okay. I need a motion for the approval of the resolution establishing fund balance policies.
I move to establish the fund balance policy as presented.
Second.
Discussion? Desmond, did you want to say anything about them?
Sure.
It's sort of word changes to like five different categories.
That's right. It moves it from the current two classifications for fund balance to five, which gives us the ability to show on our financial statements if funds are either committed or restricted or assigned. So, it's a better information that's available to those groups that have, are bondholders for the school district or other interested parties.
All set?
Batsen?
Aye.
Eli Polly?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
There's a group that is meeting outside of our regular board meetings and committee meetings to update all that information, and we'll be presenting at some point at an upcoming F&amp;F meeting.
Next.
Very next, at 6:00 PM.
Not 6:15.
It started at 5:00.
Different date, too. November's a little different for meetings, too, just everybody's aware.
And that concludes the F&amp;F committee.
Thank you very much.
And Karen, before we move forward, I just want to echo what Stephen has mentioned before, that if this is the first time that the community has watched one of our board meetings, our Board does the yeoman's share of its work in committee meetings, both at the program and personnel level, and the finance and facilities level, and the community is always welcome to those meetings, and we certainly would love to have you attend those meetings and be part of that conversation with us. The Board has had a long commitment, and we will continue to be as transparent as we can with the finances of the district through our School Finance One-on-One classes, disseminating information through our board discussions, and here at the board meeting as we move forward, but we do want the community to know that you are always welcome to come into our working sessions at our P&amp;P and our F&amp;F meetings, and they're always on the same night. And again, just backup, P&amp;P starts at 5:30, and as Stephen has mentioned, the F&amp;F meetings start at 6:00, so...
Great, okay, thank you. Property Committee, there is no report. Special Education District of Lake County, there is no report. Illinois Association of School Boards, there is no report. May I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved?
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Thank you. 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 Thank you.